So Matt Denny.
Before we start our meetings, and I've asked Commissioner Dorsey if he would lead us in this practice time.
Let's pray. Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in a free country, where we're free to go about and do as we please. We thank you for the many, many women, both past, present, and those in the future who have fought for and given ultimate sacrifice so that we may have these freedoms to live in the United States of America. We ask that you be with the many, many women in law enforcement, emergency services, EMS, fire, as they protect us and risk their lives to see that we're all safe ourselves. We ask that you give these guys and myself the wisdom and knowledge to make the right decisions tonight as we conduct people's business. And we ask that you grant traveling mercies on each and every one after people's business is completed tonight as they go home to their families. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I call the meeting to order Tuesday, February 25th. Hart County Board of Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to welcome each one here, whether you're here in person or watching HTC Channel 3 or the YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. We welcome all of you. First on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have any additions?
I don't have any.
Any Commissioner have anything?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote. So we'll move on to the public hearing on opting out of House Bill 581. Do we have a motion to open up a public hearing?
Motion to open up a public hearing, House Bill 581.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett. I've got a second by Commissioner Teasley. We'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote. We hereby announce that we are in a hearing of opting out on House Bill 581. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this particular subject at this time? Okay. If you would come forward, David, state your name and address.
My name's David Satchel, 1505 Old Peak and I grew in Harville. I've been here for a few years, I think '78, I think I came here. But I've been reading this thing over, and I just had one question. I think I talked to Joey about it, he sent me a note. And I just wanted to clarify, make sure I understood, and that everybody else understood what was going on. We're talking about increasing the value of the digest for non-homestead people, right, at the regular market rate. And we're talking about limiting homestead people to just whatever the cost of living is. So all else being equal, over time, because budget stays the same and all that kind of stuff, and you guys spend the same amount of money, over time, people who don't have homestead exemptions will be a larger percentage of the digest. So their taxes relative to the other folks are going to be higher. So you're talking about a shift in the tax burden from homestead people to non-homestead people. In addition, a lot of, in our county, a lot of the non-homestead people also don't vote here. They live somewhere else, and they've got a second home or something else. So the people that live here and have homestead are voting for the people who don't live here to have a higher percentage of the tax base. And that's, that's the only point I want to make. I want to make sure everybody understood that with 581, people that don't have homestead are going to be paying a larger percentage of the taxes. So if, over time, if spending stays the same, homestead taxes will drop. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification, homestead taxes will not drop. There's no guarantee of that. I just want to make sure it was clear.
Taxes, taxes will drop when spending stays the same. And the digest increases.
But just, just so everybody understands, just because...
Millage will probably have to go up a little bit, but as a percentage, homestead people's taxes relative to non...
Home-stated properties will be capped at whatever the Consumer Price Index is for the previous year. And those values will continue to go up. They just probably will not, we can't predict the future, they probably will not go up at the rate that the non-homesteaded properties, just so everybody understands.
Thank you, David.
All right. Appreciate that perspective, David. Is anyone else? If not, can we get a motion to...
Motion to exit.
Exit.
House Bill 581.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, have a second.
Second.
We got a second by Commissioner Teasley. We'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's a five-o vote. So now we have...
That was third and final reading, right?
Completed our three hearings on House Bill 581. And later on in the meeting, we will do our resolution. So we'll move on to approving the minutes of previous meetings. Any additions, corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
Same move.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. This is a five-o vote. All right, we'll move on down to remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities. We have none? Okay. A remark of reports by constitutional office department heads. We have none?
Not having so, EMS.
Okay.
Wants to address the board.
I just want to give you all a quick update on kind of what we did EMS-wise last year, and where we are with staffing. Last year, we had a total of $5,190 that we responded to, which was up about 150 from the year previous. That averaged out to 432 and a half, and I'll get the half and a half a month. Staffing, we currently have, we have one slot open, and we have one gentleman that'll be leaving in a few days, so we'll have two slots, full-time slots open. Right now, we've got, we've got three people out on medical leave for various reasons. Also, we have one part-time person who's getting one of those slots for us pretty much every day. That's what, we got six people in paramedic schools.
That's good.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good. We can keep them going, keep them in the right place, and they're going to be good for us.
When do they graduate, Mike?
There's times. We've got one coming up midsummer, the rest of them are a year out probably, before the end of the year.
Is that like a pecking a year to get to that, two years?
Year.
Year.
So were these three on medical leave, and one leaving, is that putting you in a pinch?
It's not helping.
Well, I know...
We're getting by, we're struggling, but we're getting, we're getting by. Yeah, we're up. She's got a couple of things, some extra shifts over time, and also, just, we're juggling these workers. Just to make it work, yeah, one day at a time. Yeah. That was the other one.
Did you say how many you had total? I know you went through the slots, you had open and part-time, how many total you got, Mike?
We have total open.
No, no, just total that you got now, not not in scoring.
So, like I said, with those three out, it's kind of juggling, juggling.
So, so what's the, how many shifts you run? About four?
Three. Three. But what we've done, we've got some going to Athens Tech, some going to Northeast Georgia for school, we've got one going to Lanier. They're shift-friendly, is what they call it, so we've put everybody going to North Georgia Tech on one shift, so none of them should have to take off to go to school. Same with Athens Tech, put them on one shift, and they shouldn't have to take off. There's very few shifts to go.
You should still try to cover your openings with part-time, and obviously, you have to do overtime sometimes.
Yes.
You gotta have them, you gotta staff trucks, because you can have no choice.
Bad, then bad, we got very little part-time. So...
Are you still using like some of the, that's not paramedics, just to drive the truck and assist and any of that?
We got EMTs.
Right.
Yeah, yes. Not, not just drivers, they all start by...
Yeah, EMTs.
Well, let them know we all appreciate what they're doing, and we appreciate the extra work that people, I mean, that's sometimes in life, when things get rough, people have to step up, and I, I hate that we're going through that, but I do appreciate that we've got the caliber of people that's willing to do that.
We appreciate y'all's support, too.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate mine.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, County Administrator?
Just one thing tonight. Several meetings ago, y'all voted me to send a letter to GDOT about the bridge, and I put a response, I got back in front of each one of you. Thankfully, they, they think the parallel bridge is a good idea, too.
They're going to straighten the road out.
Build a new one beside the old one and tear the old one down or not, but they're taking a serious look at that, so just letting you know, we did give a response back from them.
Do they have the right of way to do that over there?
It's core of engineers.
Core of engineers.
Core of engineers. My understanding is they're going to try to straighten that bend out.
Work curves.
Make it straight going up, yeah.
But again, that's a good thing. We don't need them to close that road down.
I think, I think everybody in Atlanta learned a lesson after that bridge on Royston Highway.
Right.
That's why I wanted to get this thing out here and get it done before it got too late.
Yeah, I don't think we took into consideration the 85 closing down, how many vehicles we have coming back for a few years. No matter it was closed down the cycle line side or the Georgia side, we still catch all the traffic.
Have they given a timeline on when you go make their final decision?
They're just saying it's in the, it's in the planning stage right now, and in the early phases, so they're still in the design phase, so no timeline.
But they will let you and us know when they're coming out and assessing, trying to figure out the final decision?
Yeah.
They'll put signs out and everything else before they start construction?
Yeah, they usually notify myself and the chairman of anything that's coming up. Myself on several other different things, because of merchant management side of it, but we all get notified. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. As far as the Chairman's report this week, I, I'd just like to tell Matt Denton, thank you for the contribution to the Sheriff's Department. That was, I think, a big step as far as a citizen of Hart County, that he would donate money to provide another drug dog for our Sheriff's Department. And I'd just like to tell him publicly, thank you, Matt Denton, for doing that for our Sheriff's Department. And that's all I have. We'll move on to District One, Commissioner Bennett.
I also would like to thank Mr. Denton as well. We're very familiar with Mr. Denton, he's been in and out of our meetings. It's, it's just great that people care, especially about drugs. None of us like drugs, you know, but it's here, so we just have to fight with it. And one other thing, all our departments just keep the county running very smoothly, just all of them do. But I want to make special notice to Officer Adams out of Whitworth detention, she's the superintendent of the people that pick up all our trash on the road. She just does a great job, and she takes her list from also Mr. Judd Turpin, our code enforcement officer, rides our roads and gives us those lists. And this past week, there's one of our county roads, I'm not going to name the roads, because we may look, look into that, it's a mile or so long, picked up 1,600 pounds of trash, 1,600 pounds. Another road, not far away from it, picked up 600 pounds of trash. I know Mr. Turpin's writing citations, putting people in court, we got to appreciate that. But we certainly appreciate what Ms. Adams does. I saw her out on the road, you know, driving behind those guys, walking with them and everything else. She just does a great job, so everybody just, please bless that lady for the job she does for our state and for us as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move on to District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I do, too. Appreciate Matt Denton doing that. It's a big deal, and, you know, we want to keep drugs out of our community we can. Like Commissioner Bennett says, I do appreciate the, the details that we are getting out of Whitworth out there, appreciate the warden letting us get them a few days a week, and hopefully that'll work out, where we get them more hours or more days during the week. And I also want to thank our public safety, first responders, I know Commissioner Dorsey covered that like in his prayer, but I appreciate them guys, and Mike Adams and them. I don't know about y'all, but about every time you go out in the yard, it's not nothing to hear a siren, or fire truck, or something like that going somewhere, but I appreciate all these guys keeping our community safe. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. District Four, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, past two days, I attended the ACCG Legislative Conference in Atlanta, so from some of the stuff that came up there, I figured I would share with you guys. Of course, there's a number of bills that affect us here locally, but the hot topic, of course, being 581. You know, I think, I don't know if everybody felt like this, but me, I was like, well, there could be the possibility of this thing just going away, or being so chopped up that it, you know, looked totally different than the beginning, but it for sure is here to stay. You know, there's, there's several things that I think that is going to be clarified. I think one of the things that, you know, mentioned with the, the cost of living, using the CPI index, there was just too much gray area there, and I think they want to clean that up and, and make it where it's more concise and more accurate, and something that will be delivered at an earlier date to the assessor's office, so you actually knew what that number was going to be. I personally still have an issue with going off CPI, because I think they said it was 3% inflation. I don't know about y'all, but I hadn't seen, I don't think I've seen a 3%. It's been a lot more than that inflation-wise. One thing that was concerning to me, though, and it seemed very, I wouldn't say concrete, but they felt that it was definitely going to be something that was going to be in this cleanup, was that going forward, if you opt out, we will have to have three hearings, advertising the newspaper, and opt-out every single year. That was going to be something that was required from the city standpoint, school board, as well as the county, so that, that was very interesting to me. I talked to a lot of other counties that were opting out, majority of them already had, they, they claimed that they were exempt because they had floating or frozen homestead exemptions in place, which sounded good until we got to the point of talking about their millage rate, which their millage rate, the lowest that I could come up with was a little over 10, the, the highest being around the 16, 18 range. And then they would turn and ask me what ours was, and they looked at me like I had blue hair, because I was up under four. So with us, we're just so unique in that sense, that our millage is so low, and it seems like this bill and other floating and freeze homestead exemptions, give that to the homestead person, but in turn, that millage starts creeping up exponentially really quick. And so, you know, to me, and I'm no expert by any stretch of imagination, but I don't see why you would want to take this exemption just to turn around and have a higher millage, because it won't take long before you're back to square one and end up paying more in taxes. So it was always, the past two days, seeing those, those millage rates up on the screen with what other counties and those individuals are paying in taxes, and I just couldn't believe it, you know, $300,000 house, and they're paying, you know, over $3,000 in taxes, and everybody was just nodding their head like that was normal. And I said, we'd get ran out of office if we added that high. But a lot of things coming down the pipe with that, I would urge everybody to just stay in touch and, and see how it goes. It's definitely going to affect us, and I guess we'll just adapt and move on from there. I did want to bring up to attention more for us as a board than, you know, a message to the citizens, but, you know, even with the high cost of building, it seemed to slow down last year with the building rates and, and even the buying rates when it comes to residential housing. I've noticed that in above Karnes Way area, as well as when you get to the northern end of Jackson, and some other areas have approved some large number, large developments. I think that's something we should keep an eye on. We've done a good job of, of cleaning things up and working towards protecting the county. I just don't want us to get in a situation where our low cost of entry, if that makes sense, is, is kind of an incentive to come and, and exploit that here. Just to kind of give you reference, if you go down the road about 30 or 40 minutes, before you have a piece of concrete, a load of gravel, some wood up, you're going to be at least $20,000, $25,000 in, and that's just your water, your sewer, and your impact fee. Where you compare that to here, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking at about $500 building permit. Now, you will have a water tap fee, and, you know, you have to put your septic tank in, but that's, that's a long cry from $20,000 to $25,000. So from a developer standpoint, and even a home builder standpoint, you know, it's not that fur, you know, much further down the road to come here. We just don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're playing catch-up again. Just want to throw that out there. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Matt Denton as well for his generous contribution. I know the Sheriff's Office is appreciative as well. Couple things, and I don't know, we haven't heard anything back. Did we ever write the letters to GDOT about the three-way stop on Reed Creek, Bowman Hill? We asked them, we were going to send us a letter, and that one, and the four-way stop on Liberty Hill, Liberty Hill Church.
Last, was that maybe October, was that October? September?
I believe I did, I have to go back and check.
If, if you did, and we haven't heard back, let's resend them.
Okay.
Was it in the one at Nessie Hart School and Liberty Hill Church, and Liberty Hill Church were sent by the same time?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you to follow up.
I'll double-check and resend something, too.
Yeah, I didn't know when it was going to hit. That was, that was actually in November.
I just, I just want to say, we haven't heard anything back, and this was a very quick turnaround, so let's just see.
It was all at the same time.
This was copied to enough people to get everybody's attention.
Well, I have said something to some folks at GDOT about both of these, so they acted like they didn't know exactly what I was talking about, so that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the resolution opting out of House Bill 581. Whereas Georgia Code OCGA 48-5-44.2 effective January 1st, 2025, creates a statewide homestead exemption from an adverse loan tax levied by or on behalf of the state or any county consolidated government, municipality, or local school districts in this state. And whereas, more specifically, OCGA 48-5-44.2 authorizes the governing authority of any county consolidated government, municipality, or local school district to opt out of the homestead exemption otherwise granted with respect to such political subdivisions through certain procedures and the adoption of a resolution by March 1st, 2025. And whereas Hart County desires to opt out of homestead exemption otherwise granted, and whereas Hart County has complied with the required procedures pursuant to OCGA 48-5-42.2, including but not limited to holding at least three public hearings on the intent to opt out and placing the required advertisement in a newspaper of general circulation and on the website as required. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hart County Board of Commissioners of Hart County hereby opts out of the homestead exemption otherwise granted by OCGA 48-5-42.2. It be it furthermore resolved that the Hart County Associate Clerk is hereby directed to provide a certified copy of this resolution to the Georgia Secretary of State no later than March 1st, 2025, passed and resolved on this 25th day of February 2025. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution, but just for clarity, it's OCGA 48-5-44.2, you said 42.2.
All right. All right.
I'll give you a second.
All right. Now, a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not...
I just, I just want to say one other thing before we get through with this. And I think, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking specifically for myself. This is one of the most flawed pieces of legislation to ever come out of Atlanta. If you look at this, the legislature...
this, the legislature asked the citizens to vote on a constitutional amendment, and the voters gave them the okay to make this constitutional change. Look at how many bills are being introduced in Atlanta to change what the voter is allowed to be changed. Why can't we leave it alone? Why can't, why couldn't we have done it right to start with? If we truly wanted to give tax reform, why would they not start with the school boards? That's where the majority of your property tax money goes. Think about it. I mean, I've thought long and hard about it. I can't get answers. I mean, we've got state representatives that can't even tell you what's in the, what was in the bill. We've got state senators that can't tell you. But, I mean, as Commissioner Brown echoed or talked about just a little bit ago, I mean, there's going to be changes coming to this. There's already multiple changes already been introduced, delaying the opt-out time. So I think now up to 2029. There's bills that, in my opinion, are retaliatory to, to the local governments that opt out that, that you've got to put in bold print, House Bill 370, I think is it, where you've got to put in bold print on that tax bill that the local governing authority opted out of property tax relief. What we're trying to do is to prevent tax, the tax money from people that, their hard earned tax money from getting out of control. This board has been very physically responsible throughout my 25 years and past commissioners before me and this board as well. You know, we take that village and we roll it back to make it revenue neutral. And I really feel like that if you're going to introduce legislation like this, there should have been a committee with a good cross-sectional representation because this legislation affected everybody in the state of Georgia in one way, shape, form, fashion, or another. And to word the language on the ballot, the way it was worded, I mean, people still don't know what they're putting on. And it's just, it's just a mess. And it puts everybody in a bad position. And people get upset about it because they don't understand why we're taking the steps that we're taking. But I just wanted to say that. And, you know, if you think about it, that school thing is a big one. Why, why with 70% of, in Hart County, our tax money going to the school system, why don't we start there?
My question's always been, ever since I started this, way before 581, was why, why is our property tax assessment so complicated? And why, why is the, the way that we tax our property owners and business owners, why is it so complicated? And I would personally like to see something come from Atlanta that just simplifies the tax code. And I know that's easier said than done. And I know that this bill had good intentions and it's probably going to work out great in some places. But kind of going back to what I said earlier and what Commissioner Dorsey said too, I mean, the way that this county is ran, it is, it's just so counterintuitive for us to do it. And two, I mean, you're going to see less and less, especially when you get past my generation to the next generations. We're following that European model where in Europe, I think it's around 80 to 85% rent over on. The national average for US is about 60 to 65 right now. We will continue to move towards a more of a renter versus a homeowner. The days of unfortunate of the American dream of owning a home, people either A, don't want to do it, or just, as you see now, it's unattainable. So I don't know if this is kind of a stab at trying to move towards that and capture that more tax, tax gain. But I'd just like for it to be simpler, lightest terms.
Totally agree.
No way this country boy could understand.
Well, it was, it was a wake-up call for me back in the summer when we were asking for information on this. And, you know, and we were told by the ACCG, well, the lawyers have got it. And when they get through with it and they will present a presentation, then y'all will get that. First of all, why do lawyers need it? Why couldn't it be written so that the common man would know what we're voting on? That was one stretch there that I've, and like Commissioner Dorsey alluded to, they're not through with this bill yet. For instance, you know, when this thing first come out, homestead exemption, it was the whole property. If it was a 300 acre property, that whole 300 acre property was homestead exempted. Now it's down to five acres of that, you know, homesteaded property. So there's still, you know, and, and that was one of my, you know, biggest beef is, you know, let's don't jump in this thing while it's still changing the rules. You know, let's let them get it all ironed out and then look at it. You know, because we were told you're either in or you're either out. And so, but I think it's been a very good educational process for all of us. I think we've all been kind of dedicated to finding out the best we could to relay this to our constituents. And we also appreciate Mr. Hicks for his help during this because he's been a tremendous help in helping us with the, in Terrell as well. So any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's a 5-0 vote. All right, thank you, Jimmy. All right, we'll move on to purchasing vehicle for a health department and this budgeted.
Basically, this is a truck that they wanted about two budgets ago. We're just now getting the availability of them. And it, like I say, it's in our regular budget. It don't cost us anymore. We just deduct it out of what we send them.
All right, we already got a motion, Terry. You're going to talk us out of it now?
Go ahead.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's 5-0 vote. All right.
Next one's the same situation.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second for Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, and that's to the road department. And it was budgeted, okay? Permission to bid recreation, fall sports, uniform, and photography.
This is the same thing we do every year. We're just trying to get a month or two head start on it. We're going to.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's 5-0. All right, we'll move on to bid opening replacement of the mega ramp dock. How many bids we got, Terry?
Three. I got four. I think I said three.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question on this.
Yes, sir.
So we, I know we split this, correct? With the city, what, what's the percentage? The 50/50?
50/50.
Okay.
Did y'all have?
Guys are still meeting?
Did y'all have that meeting?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
City Council has already approved.
Do they have to approve the, the bid too? How are we going to work that?
I don't know. We may have to, we have to wait till tomorrow to get that.
You got it.
Y'all going to approve the, the bid on contingency that the city does, whether you want to bid or not.
I got a bid from T and M Custom Docks out of Anderson, South Carolina, a total of
Got a bid from Marine Specialties out of Gainesville, Georgia, $97,800.
Got a bid from Boat Dock Works LLC. Their bid is $125,675.
And this right here is from Custom Docks, $79,320.
Make a motion, we turn this over to county administrator for review and whatever we decide to do.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, and second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion?
I guess what you guys do is from tomorrow, we'll have a better path and then we'll just vote on this next meeting.
He needs to review what's been bid.
I'm saying you still got to review it.
We need you to approve.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, a lot going on between y'all's meeting tomorrow and review. We should be able to vote on it next.
How long it take them to get them dogs up?
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a little way out.
Yeah, that's a little way out.
You know, I know we have a lot of tournaments happening out there.
Yeah, we don't have, they don't have the phone.
All right, we'll, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's 5-0 vote. All right, we'll move on to bid opening tennis pickleball lighting installation.
I'll make a motion, we extend it out two more weeks like we've done in the past. We're consistent.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to extend the deadline for bid, and second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All right, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's 5-0. All right, we'll move on to bid award for 23, 24 paving.
Yes, we received eight bids on this. And I give you the, the bid list there with it broken down. And what I done, I took the estimates I had in the bid package and multiplied each tonnage out. If you'll look, Stratton and Sons came in at $2,478,165. ER Snail came in at $2,587,298.50. Garrett Paving come in at $2,637,991. Allied came in at $2,753,105. CW Matthews come in at $2,862,438. Milford Excavating came in at $2,663,282.82.
That says $2,863.
$2,863. Read that wrong. That's what I'm looking at too. $2,863,282. And again, vertical earth came in at $3,242,397. Based on the bids in the past, my recommendation to go with the low bid, which is Stratton and Sons for $2,478,165.
I got a question on this thing. Is, I didn't see anything in any paperwork. Is anything in any of our contracts with whoever gets on the aprons that they?
Yeah. The previous bids, previous bids in this bid, bid pegs that put one, up to one foot apron. I changed it in this contract, in this bid package, it's four, up to four foot of apron if we needed.
Well, I just noticed on some of their last Stratton paved, one particular road, not going to call names, if there's anywhere from six inches to eight, nine, 10, 12 inches max. And then on another road, there's two foot, four foot. I, one is up 16 foot, eight foot and 10. It's, I'll, I'll tell you later whether, I'm not going to call that road.
That's in the city.
No, that's in the county. Not far from my house. Anyway.
All right, let's get back.
No, no intersection. They was even doing some of, some of the farm pastures even had a two-foot apron on them. And a lot of the driveways on the other road.
But I specified in this particular bid package.
We want to specify it this time.
Four foot.
Four foot.
Is what specified it.
Yeah, because this, those short aprons have caused issues.
Up to four foot. If they don't need four foot, they don't get four.
Okay. And the other thing we need to add in there is any change orders in any of these, any of this paving?
That's in all contracts. They got to issue.
That it be brought before the board?
Correct.
Well, they'd have to recognize an addendum too, if it was in there in the bid pack.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see if there's any change orders. I didn't saw any. I've, I've yet to this day seen one.
The only one we've, we haven't really had that I know of.
Only thing we've changed.
Jail. We had some change orders.
On the jail, correct. Only thing on road paving we've ever had was we get to a certain end and we got X number of chunks of concrete left.
And we done that.
To put them.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, we need to specify change to come before the board.
And it did, Commissioner Bennett, when, when they did have money left over at the end of the bid process and their paving, they, they.
Well, I don't turn it in. They give us more roads.
Well, yeah, they, they gave us Cherokee Bridge when we was able to pave that way for the amount of money they had left over.
Yeah, same. There wasn't any extra dollar in the contract.
I'm with you on that. I just want to make sure that, I mean, if there is change order, obviously.
Right. I just want to see.
We'd have to approve it anyway.
Question, how much LMIG is, is in this one? This is.
2.4 million.
So.
2.4.
2.4. So LMIG's, we got to match that.
Yeah. It'll balance out whatever.
You got, you have like 700,000.
We got an old package, it's size two to go out.
WT splosh money, I mean, your splosh five money.
So.
No, this is a big difference in matching this, whatever is, whatever is left to go in the next.
We had a million dollar match also. Didn't we have a million dollar match?
You had 758,000 from 2023 and like 800,000 from last year. That's LMIG that will require the match. Then you had the million dollar surplus.
The surplus that doesn't require the match.
That's what I, that was my question was, is, I could remember if, if the million dollar without the match was going to be on the next one or if it's on, on.
It could be either way.
It can bill either way.
Right.
I got to, I got to.
But you got to budget, you got to budget it for here.
I got to break it down and close out of that, these grants. It'll all have to be listed out what we spend.
So we got 2.4 in LMIG money. That's not even counting the money that we're putting in. So how much?
And we got at least as much more dollars for us to pave.
We got more.
So we're going to do, so we're going to do a more paving next year with that?
No, we're going to do it, we're going to do it this year. I'm going to send it out next month, month after next.
Okay. So we'll, we'll actually have two, two paving cycles.
You'll be paving about 24, 25 miles of road this.
It was the minute road we split it and then had.
And we take our LMIG money.
Well, I know we, in the past, we've done every two years. And the, the last paving, which was, I was barely on here, but a month or two, and that was only a few roads. So this, this is the year that we're going to be paving a lot more roads.
Yeah, we have, if I remember right, 25, 26 miles of road total for this.
And all of ours come from splosh five, correct?
See, they come from LMIG and splosh five.
I'm saying our, our, our portion.
Our portion is splosh five.
Our portion to, for the 30% match for the LMIG to come out of splosh five, and then 100% of the, the other bid, if that's the way you want to do it, the other two and a half, $3 million is going to be 100% splosh five.
And LMIG doesn't help us with striping, right? It's, it's just.
No. Every, every five, six years, they'll come out with a striping grant, but, but no. You can do striping with it. You don't do any.
Well, like the striping we approved, we're, we're pulling that from the splosh.
Yeah, they have to be for striping, it's coming completely out of splosh five.
Where do you think we'll be on that, that splosh amount after we get done with the striping and the two pavings here this year?
I'd have to go back and look through all of it. I'd be scared to death.
Three to four million dollars.
Because all of, all of those numbers was in, in, in the budget projections I gave you, but I do not remember exactly what they are.
I remember what the total was, but I haven't deducted the rest of it.
You're basically spending three and a half million dollars roughly out of splosh five.
That, that's not counting what we normally budget out of splosh five.
I understand. But I'm just talking for paving. Around three and a half million is about what we're going to spend.
Paving, yeah. Paving, then you got another half million.
You got half million for, for striping, and you took 400,000 for the road department.
Basically, just trying to figure out where we're going to be into this year. Because last year, you know, we started at 11 million, then it was nowhere at 7 million. And then now we're doing.
That 7 million figure was taking all this into consideration.
Yeah, I remember you saying that. And so that's what I'm trying to think now is, okay, well, at the end of this year, I guess we'll still have the 7 millions where we should be.
No, no.
No?
Between three and four.
Well, how did we go from accounting for this and going to seven to now we're going to the 3 million?
When you seen that 11 million dollars, that 11 million dollars total, that wasn't just 11 million dollar road money. That 11 million dollars total in splosh.
Right, right.
You still had IBA, you had several hundred thousand dollars. You still had, the water authority had a million dollars in it. So all these other things come out, yeah, that was 11 million dollars in splosh five. But the time you break it down, with roads, with water, with IBA, all that comes along. So that's why the numbers.
And that's, that's pretty much where we got to, where we were at the 7 million for roads and road department, which still includes road department, obviously is getting their equipment and maintenance and everything else that are not.
We can't do maintenance.
Supplies, getting supplies through there.
So the, the 10 and a half to 11 million dollars come from that seven, I think it's 7.7 million plus the 2.5 billion for LMIG that we had money for road paving or road works. That was total LMIG and splosh five.
And LMIG for 25 will bring in, I can't miss, between 700 and 800, $700,800 more LMIG money that will use a couple of years from now. That, that'll be coming in the next month or two.
But no bonus money like we got this, this last year.
No, no, there's no bonus money. There's just your regular LMIG.
All right.
I'll make a motion, we award this paving bid to Stratton and Sons.
I forgot to announce, I'm, I'm still abstaining from this, just like the bid opening for conflict interest. So I will not be voting for that conflict.
All right.
I'll give you a second.
Dorsey has made a motion to go with Stratton and Sons on the paving for these roads that are listed. So and then Commissioner Bennett, give a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's a 4. It's a four, yes, and a one.
When, when do you plan on putting the other ones out for bid, Terrell?
Hopefully, next, next few weeks. I just, I just moved the roads over, same, same bid package, just moved the roads over, right, road name over.
All right. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, new business, uh, we'll move on down to revision to send out RFP for meals on wheels. Uh, food supplier for our senior center. Ms. Kelly?
Are y'all my eyes? I'm gonna make sure. Y'all, y'all good?
Do we look like that?
No. This probably seems really confusing, because, um, Legacy Link has never done this before. This is something brand new. I wanted to come and explain exactly what Legacy Link does for the county and for the senior center. So, Legacy Link is like the Monopoly bank, and they get the money through a grant and through a program to get the federal and the state fund, and, and they match it, uh, with the county's portion. So, what they decided to do this year, I guess it's probably what, late fall? We got an email saying that they would no longer contract individually as a whole unit and district with the food vendors. It would be up to each county and each senior center to partner with the vendor. So, that's why we're here. Uh, it kinda doesn't make any sense how, why they decided to do it. So, they went from having just one bill to now they're gonna be having fourteen bills sent out to each, uh, senior center. So, keep in mind that even though the county would have to put the portion up front for the food, there, there will be the reimbursement. So, I included, um, what the actual, what we have spent out in the last couple of years, plus what we have been reimbursed, and then I included also this allocation plan. Y'all got it? All right? So, each one of those, um, is a different fund number, so like the, the C one, that is actually for our Congress. So, right now, uh, we'll be reimbursed one hundred and fourteen thousand, eight sixty-six if we, as long as we serve all our meals, and we'll have no problem doing that. Um, right now, for twenty twenty-five, FY twenty-five, we're being reimbursed sixteen dollars and fifteen cents per meal. Last year, uh, which was my first year, we were reimbursed seven dollars and forty cents a meal, so we're being reimbursed a really good amount. Uh, for our home delivered meals, we're being reimbursed in twenty twenty-four, two dollars and sixty-six cents a meal, and now we're being reimbursed four dollars and twenty-two cents a meal. So, each year, we hope to be reimbursed that, that amount. Um, there, there's all these different funds, and I know all these numbers don't make a whole lot of sense. So, if you add them all up, that is what projected in overall as to what will be reimbursed. Uh, we also get reimbursed, it does not say in here for transportation, but what we have to do is we take twenty percent of the C one budget, which is our Congress budget, and we shift it to getting reimbursed for transit. And then we, I'll take twenty percent of that as well and put that over into our home delivered meals, 'cause there's not a big, um, budget for home delivered meals, and we have more home delivers than we do Congress. Right now, um, there are about anywhere between twenty-five and thirty, uh, Congress that come to the center every day. On Bingo Wednesdays, it can be thirty-five to forty. Um, on, for our, our home delivered meals, which is our meals on wheels, there's, uh, right around a hundred. So, it kinda balances back and forth what we do there. So.
Are they prepared for this transition they're doing? I mean, I read through a lot of it, and I just didn't.
It's gonna make their job a lot easier, it'll make hers a lot more complicated.
Exactly right, yes. Um, so, here's, here's my personal opinion, and, you know, I don't really have much of an opinion about it, but, um, I met with our current vendor now last week. And of course, there's, they can't tell us what they're going to be charging per meal, but right now, we're paying five dollars and sixty-one cents a meal. And I'm sure that's only gonna go up, because the cost of feed's going up.
I'm just curious if it might, was gonna cause hiccups.
I hope not. It has to be rolled out by July the first. Um, it, it has to be in place by July the first. That's why we're hopefully getting ahead of it right now to get it all ready to go. My, my best outcome in, in what I was thinking, if we could somehow, no, or talk the jail into providing meals. Well, that's true, but, um, hopefully, you know, something, a cheaper option would be, the cheapest is who I hope that we can go with. So.
Jail's a little more expensive, what we pay there than what you'd go overnight there. From the numbers where we've bitted it out.
Just keep in mind, we're, we're soliciting a RFP.
Right.
So, I mean, anybody can bid on this.
Absolutely, yes.
Send me the proposal.
We're also, um, I also called other, several other different senior centers over the last couple of weeks to see what they do that are not in our Legacy Link, um, area. And they actually require some of their Congress and their, um, meals on wheels clients to pay a portion to offset that. So, I'd be willing to look at that as an option, but keep in mind, most of our clients that we serve, not all of them are, you know, they're homebound seniors. And there, a lot of them that they don't have family that are here, they don't have people that are able to take care of them, so they depend on our one meal that we feed them five days a week.
They do.
Um.
We'll know more about this after we get to RFPs, okay?
Yeah.
Then we can make the sound decision on it.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that y'all were clear on how and why it was drawn.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
You did give some clarity.
I would ask that we add two things to this.
What's that?
Um, just like we're doing our bid process, so it's got due on April third, twenty twenty-five at two PM Eastern Time. We put the items that we've got in there, like FedEx, UPS are not always gonna be able to be here, and that late bids will be rejected. Late propos, late proposals will be rejected.
We'll put the standard verbiage where we got all the.
That way we're consistent with what we're doing.
Is that in form of a motion?
I'll put that in the form of a motion, and Kelly, I, I hate to say this, but this, this looks like it's gonna be a really intense process for you.
Yeah, but I'm willing to do it, and I have great staff members that are willing to help me out as well. Um, and I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be key to, to making sure that this goes out, is, is our staff working together.
I'll put that in the form of a motion that we go with that, with that change in the language.
I'll give you a second. All right, we got a motion to second to, uh, put this out for RFPs for meals on wheels. Uh, any other discussion, question? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, then we'll move on to, uh, amendments to chapters fifty, manufacturers' homes and trailers.
Uh, what we've kinda run into when, when we passed this back last year, uh, we put in here for a building inspector to inspect a mobile home. Uh, what I, what I've learned is, is a building inspector, all he can expect, inspecting a mobile home is to see if the switch box is covered and see if it's got smoke alarms. That's the two things he can check, because it was built under, under a supervised deal. So, looking at it, what we're trying to get to it is, is something livable being brought into the county. And, and I do believe a home inspector would be more qualified and be less expense on the customer, too.
Before it's brought.
Before it's brought, but then, but then get the pictures and, and, and send them to us with the, with certified home inspectors appraisal of it, that it's livable or not livable. We're not, we're not looking at the price of it, we're just gonna see if it's livable or not.
Don't it make, don't, don't it make have, have an application for the permit now?
Yeah.
Or just add it to the.
Well, I've seen other counties is, who, who, let's just say that I'm buying the mobile home in Scriven County and want to move it up here. It would be on me, and it's my, uh, responsibility to hire.
Correct.
This home inspector, they have to stamp it.
Correct.
So, they're not going to, um, you know, lean one way or another, 'cause if they have to put their certified stamp in, it's legit.
Correct.
And I think that's the cleanest thing you can do is.
We're not gonna give, tell them who they gotta get, that's up to them to get who they want to. And if it's, if it's in Scriven County, they can, they can get a home inspector out of Scriven County to do it.
But pro veritas, I mean, they, 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 I guess they've tried, and they're just unable to even attempt it, inspecting these floors.
It's not thorough, it's not thorough, what Terrell's talking about, a home inspection, that's where they gonna come and look at every bedroom, baseboard, light, everything.
Well, the issue now is the, the building, the, the building inspector, so I guess with pro veritas, they're, they're not able to inspect it.
Well, they, they can inspect it, but that's all they can inspect.
It's just that switch box and stuff.
The switch box and then the smoke.
Yeah, me and Frankie can do that.
I think you just put it on, on the, on the buyer.
Correct.
They can choose whomever, as long as they're certified.
And then the ordinance requires them to send us pictures, anyway. Uh, and just have it stamped by a building inspector, uh.
Home inspector.
Home inspector, that they, that they actually do it.
I'll make a motion to have a home inspection upon mobile homes prior to moving to Hark County, Georgia.
Could we take this as a first reading, Kim, with this change?
There are so many changes.
The whole thing with changing is the word.
You've got your building inspector, you've got certificate of occupancy that's required for the issue of a home inspector. At least everybody do that.
Yeah, let us issue that, 'cause we, we, and then we do inspect.
That's just transportation permit.
Let's just change the name.
We're just asking for a home inspection license, certified home inspector, now.
But prior to the per, permit process.
Yeah, the whole, the whole purpose of this ordinance is not, is to have quality mobile homes brought in here, not dilapidated ones when they go into a driveway, the frame breaks in half, and some of the other scenarios we've had to deal with.
Are you still gonna charge them five hundred dollars?
They have to pay the home inspector, no, we take that, we charge it, it's paid.
Well, just, just scrap that first reading.
Okay, and then where it says photographs of the interior expert, you gotta x that.
Now, that would come in the inspection report.
Your home inspector purposes say it.
I understand, but this is in compliance with section four of this ordinance, but there's no section four on state, no, no, help, the state can say.
Don't, don't worry about a first reading tonight. That's fine.
But basically, the biggest change is if it's cleanup, whatever else, it is just changing from a building inspector to a home inspector.
Certified home inspector.
All right, we'll not take any action on that.
Okay.
Could we not just take action then?
Was it all my motion?
All right.
Well, I think you gotta take action.
Yeah.
You gotta take action.
We take action on this.
We gotta change the wording.
Certified home, sir.
authorize the county attorney to bring it back before first reading next meeting.
You just wanna amend your motion to that, just the change.
I made my motion to change the wording from inspector to.
I thought she was gonna bring back the, what we needed in there.
She'll, she'll bring back what we fixed.
And then we'll vote on it.
But what we need to fill in, what we won't fix, I mean, that's the whole purpose of changing it.
We just told her.
But then, I guess we'll go and vote on it. That might wish your brains and we do it first reading.
We can vote on it, and she can change it and bring it back.
And then we'll do a first reading, right?
Yep.
All right. Then we got, um, you, you understand, Kim, what, all we've got, okay?
I got a second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, Commissioner Bennett made the motion.
Michael doesn't advise the thing.
Yeah, I got it, I don't know if you got it or not, Mark's acting like he ain't got it.
I don't know when you go on the bid, but. We'll, you just toss it up, and you'll be okay. Okay, and then Commissioner Brown makes a second.
We can read it when you bring it back.
Call for a vote, all in favor? All right, it's five oh vote. All right, then we'll move on to, uh, credit for experience EMS. Got Mr. Mike Adams again with us tonight.
Is this one of your vacancies you gonna fill?
Now, this one we already filled. Uh, back in August, we hired Amber Dugan, she worked with Westport, let her come back. Uh, we hired her back full-time. Uh, she's been a medic since twenty twenty, so I'm asking to give her two years' experience. Uh, and also make it reflect to what we, Mr. Howard's knowledge.
I'll give you that motion.
Second.
We got a motion to second, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five oh vote.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, now we'll move on to public comment, if there's anyone who would have, would like to address the board for any kind of county business, we'd be happy to hear from you. All right, if not, if not, we'll, uh, gonna get a motion to exit into executive session for litigation personnel in real estate?
I'll make a motion, we exit into executive session for real estate personnel and litigation.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. We'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Uh.
It's a five oh vote. Thank you all.
Goodness gracious. There, Mike, Joey Dorsey's gonna fail out of his chair.
Boy, you been jumping rope, right?
I've been walking. Oh, man, what's that, man?
Man, you got to be good on that.
Look at boss, man, you ain't put no money.